Last week I announced my candidacy to be your next county judge executive. But tonight, I just wanted to introduce myself in open dialogue with you. Question that you have here in Earlanger. Obviously, I get a chance to see a lot of cities and there are a lot of great public servants. And especially, I think that it's very true that the more I've been involved in politics, I've seen that city councils and mayors, staff from cities, you know, you work your tails off and do a great job. And oftentimes, you don't, aren't thanked enough for that. And I do appreciate the work you do for, not only this is Earlanger, but all of Kitten County. One of the things that I would like to do is just let you know that I really believe strongly that in moving in the future, one of my focuses will be open and honest communication to solve the problems in Kitten County. And that I really, I feel strongly that if you sit down, oftentimes, you have good discussion. There's, we have a lot of smart people in this community, and all the problems that exist, we can fix them all if we work in a way that is actually open and honest. And I would like to really work with you in that fashion in the future. One of the things we'll do over the next year and a half, I get to continue serving you, serving you as a county commissioner. Hopefully, after that, for the following four years as your judge executive, I will just work strongly to work and do the things for the community that build a stronger Earlanger in Kitten County. And I'm confident that we can do even more great things for our community if we dream big, are realistic, but then actually, once we come together, have an agreement, and move forward with the community. Thank you for letting me speak to you this evening. I'm going to stay around for the meeting. Hopefully, I get a chance to talk with most of you afterwards. And just know that my door's open at all, at all times, whether I be at home or at my office. Love to talk to you and learn more about where I can help you to make Earlanger even better. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Next is our service award recognitions. The first guy I'd like to go down to the podium is sitting to my left. I got a free shot. (laughing). (inaudible) chasing him down, Kareen?
(inaudible).
Chasing him down. Jim V. Ochs has been the city attorney, city engineer for the city of Earlanger for forty-five years. In November of 1967, Jim, a Earlanger native and a Lloyd grad, was discharged from the Army Corps of Engineers after serving as a first lieutenant in Vietnam. In 1968, he replaced his father, James H. V. Ochs Jr., upon his death as a city engineer. He's served us continuously ever since. In the summer of 1971, he hired a guy to work in the summer who was in engineering school at the University of Virginia, and I got to see how the sausage was made. And got to work for Jim for four summers, four of the best summers I ever had in my life. Was working for V. Ochs and V. Ochs, and his brother Billy, of course, was, he always kept me on my toes. Anyway, Jim has served the city in so many ways that we can't even, it's hard to imagine. But let me just give you some of the, some of the things that Jim's done. Building Code Appeals Board, our OKI representative, Sanitation District Task Force, Dixie Highway Corridor Study Committee, Richardson Road Corridor Study Committee, Northern Kentucky Area Planning Council or Commission Subdivision Advisory Committee, Kitten County and Municipal Planning and Zoning Street Standards Committee, and the Water Advisory Committee. He's currently, has been for a long time involved in the Earlanger Housing Corp. He's a past chair and he's a current secretary. He's the Earlanger Codes Enforcement Board, he's a chair of that, and he's the Sanitation District Advisory Committee. Jim's service to the citizens of the city of Earlanger has touched every aspect of the city operations. And this place would not be what it is today but for not only Jim, but his father before him and in all the V. Ochs and V. Ochs family over there. I think Nancy gave me some information a while back that I kind of remember. There was a fellow who used to be city manager who was my father, and he used to say, Clyde called and said, "What have you done for me lately?" And when that happened, Jim knew that it was about to hit the fan, because something had to happen. And I remember when I first came on city council in 1991, something like that, we were still in a situation where every time it rained, we kind of all hid from the telephones, especially Jim, because we still had sanitary sewers and storm sewers tied together in certain old areas of the city. And we knew whose baseboards were going to get flooded, and we knew who was going to call. And when we put together a committee to decide what to do about it, we knew who to call to come up and tell us what the problems were. It was, it was a nightmare, and Jim worked our way through all that stuff. Now our sewers belong to the sanitation district, vacuum for that one still. I could go on forever talking about our friend Jim V. Ochs, but today, tonight, I'd just like to thank you for forty-five years of service.
Mayor, thank you very, council, thank you very much. I thought about this earlier today, and I said something to David Hahn about it. I've survived six mayors, five city administrators, three public works directors, two city attorneys, and probably in the range of forty to forty-five city council persons. Over that forty-five year period, things have changed a whole lot. Over the forty-five years that I've been here, I hope to still be standing here, to get my fiftieth five years from now. And as I mentioned five years ago, told Nancy that she can wheel me in a wheelchair as long as she can get me in the front door here.[404.41][404.41](laughing). I love the city, and you can tell from the involvement I've been with city activities that I certainly do love it, and I appreciate everything you all have done with me. Thank you very much.
Tonight, we're recognizing Katie Klopp for her five-year service pin. Katie started as a voluntary EMT in 2008 while she was attending UC College. Katie became a part-time EMT in 2010, and later that year graduated with a bachelor's in nursing. Katie continued her studies in paramedicine and graduated again this past year by completing her paramedicine degree. Katie currently serves as a part-time paramedic and uses her complete skill sets every patient she treats. We're very fortunate to have Katie for the last five years and value her as a wonderful practitioner. Thanks, Katie.
I'm here to present Ryan Ashley his five-year pin. And I'm going to have to tell you, I was kind of surprised, doesn't seem like five years. Does it?
No.
No, not at all, not at all. Ryan, we made him serve his first time in dispatch. So, we made him do just a little bit over three years in dispatch before we said, "Oh, okay, maybe he deserves a chance to be out on the street." But no. Ryan, Ryan proved himself worthy of that and worked very hard to get there. And for the last year and a half or so, he's been on the road, and he has been a pleasure. He's taken into it just like a duck to water. One of our best, best new police officers we have. And hopefully, Mr. V. Ochs, someday, he'll be up here getting his forty-five-year pin. Also, it's a special night. I'd like to say that they're expecting their first house, and Ryan are. Nineteen weeks. Nineteen weeks, so there we go, continuing the Earlanger family. Ryan?
Tonight's mayor's report is going to talk about 237 years ago. Two-hundred-and-thirty-seven years ago, the area in which we sit was part of the Commonwealth of Virginia. And there was quite the uprising going on up and down the East Coast. On May 15th of 1776, the Revolutionary Virginia Convention, then meeting in Williamsburg, passed a resolution instructing Virginia's delegates in the Continental Congress in Philadelphia to propose to that respectable body to declare the United Colonies Free and Independent States, absolved from all allegiances to or dependence upon the Crown or Parliament of Great Britain. In accordance with those instructions, on June 7th, 1776, Richard Henry Lee presented a proclamation or a resolution to Congress. On June 1st of 1776, the Continental Congress formed three committees. One committee was to draft a document of the Declaration of Independence. One is for drafting a form of government that they called the Articles of Confederation, and one for drafting a model treaty to guide foreign relations. A resident, a citizen of the Commonwealth of Virginia, which was the largest colony at that time, included us here in Kentucky, was, was in each of the committees. The Articles of Confederation were turned over to Richard Henry Lee. The treaty committee had Benjamin Harrison on it, but also had Benjamin Franklin on it. And the Declaration of Independence had Thomas Jefferson on it, as well as John Adams. The committee, to draft the Declaration of Independence, had worked on it for, for quite some time. And there was an argument or a discussion as to who should, who should actually write the document. And it came down to the leading vote getter, Mr. Jefferson, and the second leading vote getter, Mr. Adams. And Mr. Adams wanted Mr. Jefferson to write the, the document, and he explained why. He recalled in a conversation, the book I'm reading, which is the, the Thomas Jefferson, The Art of Power by John Meacham. If you know John Meacham, he appears on Morning Joe almost every day of the week, so you can see him live and in person. But Mr. Adams recalled the ensuing conversation with Jefferson, and the Virginian suggested that John Adams write the draft. "I will not," said Adams. "You should do it," said Jefferson. "Oh, no." "Why will you not? You ought to do it." "I will not." "Why?" "Reason's enough." "What can be your reasons?" "Reason first," says Adams, "you are a Virginian, and a Virginian ought to appear as the head of the business." "Reason number two, I am obnoxious, suspected, and unpopular. You are very much the otherwise." "Reason third, you can write ten times better than I can." "Well, if you are decided, I will do as well as I can." "Very well, when you have drawn it up, we will have a meeting." Mr. Jefferson set to drawing the thing up. I bring this up tonight because it was July 2nd that, that we became an independent country. It was July 2nd of 1776. The Second Continental Congress voted to approve Richard Henry Lee's motion for independence. Lee's motion had been put forward on June 7th and after months of debate and over a year of armed conflict with Great Britain. Lee's motion read, "Resolved that these United Colonies are and of right ought to be free and independent states, that they are absolved from all allegiance from the British Crown, and that all political connection between them and the state of Great Britain is and ought to be totally dissolved." In his, in the letter to his wife Abigail, Mr. Adams predicted that the second day of July will be the most memorable epica in the history of America. Adams had good reason for that. The day, the 3rd of July, he wrote to Abigail and said, "Yesterday, perhaps the greatest question was decided which was ever debated in America, and a greater perhaps never will be decided among men. A resolution was passed without one dissenting colony, that these United Colonies are and of right ought to be free and independent states, and such they have and of right have full power to make war, conclude peace, establish commerce, and do all the other acts and things which the other states will rightfully do." You will see in a few days, a declaration setting forth the causes which have impelled us to this mighty revolution and the reasons which will justify it in the sight of God and man. A plan of confederation will be taken up in a few days on July 2nd, 1776. The association known as the United Colonies of America officially became the United States of America. So, we are celebrating a holiday today. We celebrate a holiday all week. The actual language of the Declaration of Independence was approved two days later. It was not signed until August. But the Continental Congress approved the actual language after another month of debate and wordsmithing and cutting this out and putting that out. And we all know the first two paragraphs of that document. We all know the whole thing. But the British government in London didn't know the United States had declared itself free till August 30th, 1776, so they were kind of talking to themselves. I wanted to bring that to your attention tonight, to know that, that July 2nd is an important day in American history. In the fact that a bunch of men committed treason to the mother country on that day by voting for a resolution to declare independence from the Crown and the King. And they, they pledged their lives, their honor, and their sacred fortune. As we learned in my church on Sunday, Charlie Martin told us that of the people who signed the Declaration of Independence, several of them were killed in the war. Several of them had children killed in the war. Several of them lost everything that they owned. Several of them died bankrupt, and several of them went on to greater things. And one thing that I wanted to read, that I thought was humorous in this book, Thomas Jefferson loved the story of an exchange between the fat Benjamin Harrison of Virginia, big guy, we like big guys, and the wispy, eldred Jerry of Massachusetts, from which Jerry Mandering became named after. Benjamin Harrison said, "Jerry, when the hanging comes, I shall have the advantage. You'll kick the air half an hour after it's all over with me." I wish you all a great holiday. I hope that we recognize the freedoms that we have living here. The freedom to exercise this form of government, where people come in and redress their grievances to us, where we try to provide public safety the best way we know how, within the confines. Since Chris is here, we have another level of government, the county government, that has a different area of concern, that we all have a say in how it runs, we all have a say in who serves in those positions that had heretofore been unknown when these men decided to commit treason on July 2nd, 1776. Let's go to the reports of standing committees. Public Safety and Police, Ms. Pitts.
We've hired four new police officers. Three have experience, one's from Memphis, Tennessee, and he's in field training, and the other two are on the floor, who will begin field training on July 8th. We also have a rookie who will begin basic training in the academy on July 29th. There's still two openings left, which we hope to have filled in the basic training academy by the beginning of August. In addition to this, we've agreed to term, new terms for a five-year contract with Crescent Springs to continue providing police and dispatch. The attorneys will be given this information to provide a new agreement which would take effect January 1st, 2014. We've also begun talks with Elsmere on agreement language for providing them dispatch services. We hope to have this agreement in place by January 1st, 2014. The rest of our dispatch customers are scheduled to leave on August 1st, 2013, and we've been working with Kitten County to ensure a smooth transition. Everybody should have received the email of our monthly report of May, and Chief Fields is in the house.
Chief Fields.
Sir, I have a question.
Any questions on the committee or Chief Fields? Seeing none, we'll move on to Public Safety, Fire, and EMS. Mr. Dunhoff.
The first thing I have, I'd like to request a committee meeting for July 16th regarding the Station One project.
That's, that will be a great committee meeting because you will see the plans for our new firehouse expansion, community center, and facility with the Board of Education.
Right.
Anything else, John?
Yes. Acting Chief Todd Shulker sent everybody a copy of his report. If anybody has any questions, feel free to call him. And the acting chief Todd is in the house.
Not to take too much of your time, I just want to draw your attention to a little, two things major in that report. Two significant events for the month. One, one involved in a nine-year-old that had received significant serious burns from the chest from playing with a lighter with friends, with alcohol and aerosol cans. Pretty devastating injuries. We wish him well, that's for sure. The others, you've probably heard in the news last week, was our structure fire that occurred in North Talbot. Significant fire event. I'll let you read the report as it says, there is a significant amount of damage. Residents were displaced. Red Cross has always been a true friend in helping. The owner, management owners of the property are trying to relocate all of those citizens within their communities for the other properties they may own, such as Centonia and other locations. We obviously wish them as well. I do want to say since Captain Allen's in the house, Captain's Allen's ship was the responsible ship that night, and this ship did an outstanding job. There's a significant amount of fire, it was a, it doesn't really tell you, but they were in a good firefight for quite a while. He kind of downplays it, but there was a lot of heat and a lot of firefight going on that, that night. And they did a great job, as, as we would expect. Significant injuries could have been resulted in firefighters and civilians that night. Interesting enough, they just, a couple ships before that practiced big water fast. And unfortunately, they had to use that, that training just from several ships that night. Good job, Captain Allen, Kevin, good job to your ship. Jim, thank you for everything you've done for the fire service on our part. If you don't know, we rely on RISO as a result of water supply being part of that. And that didn't, that didn't just come overnight. That water supply, such as our Hydrant and water, started a long time ago with engineering starting twenty, thirty years ago. And that's how we got to where we are because of Jim. I've said it numerous times, that he has been, been a big supporter of ours, but a good planner for this community as well. Last is just remember, have a happy 4th of July, drive safely, and use some common sense on fireworks safety. Any questions for me?
Any questions? The chief and the committee. Thank you.
I've got it.
You got something else, Sean?
Mark Stewart's in the house.
Yes, Mark, do you have anything to add?
No.
Saw you sitting back there, I didn't, you weren't antsy to get up.[1350.33][1350.33](laughing). But you never know, you're stoic sometimes. Okay. Public Works, Mr. Cahill, Mr. Brown.
I guess, Mr. Mayor, a couple things highlighted. JPS has completed all but two pores in Misty Creek, and they should have those done in the next couple of weeks. The new walking path from the Glades along Mayor's Road to Thorn Tree is just about done. We're waiting for some signage and the crosswalk to be finished up there. And last but not least, we had this Thursday out at Flagship Park. Public Works did a great job getting everything prepped up, working with the folks from Taylor Consumer Public Relations for, for the Sam Deeds Name Your Heroes Brickyard 400 celebration. It's quite an event. The park looked great, the guys looked great. Also heard from Mr. Bogart today, he hopes to be back in the next week or so, so it sounds like his rehab is doing well. Mr. Milliken's in the house.
Ed, do you have anything?
I don't have anything, Mayor.
I'm sorry I was unable to get to Mr. Deeds' celebration because I had a prior commitment, but he did come down and see me two or three days before. He didn't know that he'd won. I almost let the cat out of the bag. But I played dumb, which is easy for me to do. And what a nice guy. And just, just, you know, he's one of the people that, that this country's based on. I'm happy that Sam won that. And now we've got a bunch of bricks up at Flagship Park, so it's pretty cool.
It looks great. The guy's did a great job. It was, it was incredible to be there and to see his reaction. It was, it was a great memory.
Any questions of Ed or the committee? Seeing none, we'll move on to administration. Mr. Burke, Mr. Longshore.
I've just got a couple of things. First one's on property tax collection. We collected about fifty-seven hundred in June, bringing the total of three million eight-hundred-and-sixty-nine thousand. And on the passports, we had ninety-two applications in June, and total of nine-hundred-and-thirty-two for the year so far. Do you have anything, sir?
Mrs. is in the house?
Missy. Any questions of the committee or Ms. Andrews? Back on Public Works for a second, we're still working administratively on the rental property issue. I didn't want you to, it's on the agenda, I didn't want you to think we blew over it, but the word, there's nothing to report here. We're still working on it.
Well, it's one of ours, two about, and we're going to have the first reading tonight on it, so that's why I didn't say that.
Right, right. Okay, Finance. Mr. Higher, Mr. Flagship.
The budget for fiscal year 2014 and the amended budget for fiscal year 2013 have been entered into the accounting system. The staff has completed the preliminary closing of fiscal year 2013, and the year-end balances have been rolled over to begin fiscal year 2014. And the staff has also begun work on preparation, the audit work papers for fiscal year 2013.
Greg Engelmann's in the house. Strangl, with them. Any questions of Finance Committee or Mr. Greg Engelmann? Seeing none, the Friendship City Networking Committee, Ms. Kyle, Ms. Cahill.
Bravo Battery, Lieutenant Commander Tarp Wiseman has received new orders, and the first 302nd will announce the new lieutenant commander in July. And also with Bravo Battery, the Administration Department employees donated baked candy for the Children's Candy Walk event at Bravo Battery function. Our newsletter, the summer edition of The Whistle Stop, will be placed on Facebook on our website in July, so I'm going to assume that some, if it's not up now, it should be up soon. Summer Park program is off to a great start. The first night, Earlanger Night Putt-Putt, took place on Thursday, June 13th, with ninety-eight people in attendance. Everyone had a great time, and the weather was beautiful. We tried to get there, but it was easier getting Tom back from China than it was getting him back from Jamaica. And so, we totally missed it while we were at the airport for four hours waiting for whatever to happen, and lost luggage, et cetera. The following week, June 20th, Public Works had Touch a Truck event that was held at the Public Works facility. The Public Works staff did an outstanding job. The facility was in great condition, as well as the trucks and equipment that were on display. The staff was very helpful to our residents and always ready to lend a hand. The event was a lot of fun, and our residents were very well attended with an estimated eighty people. And I did get to attend that, and it was excellent. They did turn off the big horns, but they didn't turn off the little ones, so next year, both. Yeah.[1635.23][1635.23](laughing) It was loud.
What?
Oh, it was loud. He was there.[1642.83][1642.83](laughing). He was there too.
He was kidding.
It was him. I think, I think the last name was Brown, but I'm not real positive. And then finally, we had a rain, Rain Out on the Tuesday Night Event, which was held Wednesday, June 27th. Honey Hill Farm Traveling Pet Zoo was at Rainbow Park from 6:00 to 7:00, and that was another great event.
And I have the upcoming events. Wednesday, July 10th, will be the general government event, and this is Cincinnati Zoo Traveling Bird Show, and that will be at Flagship Park from 6:00 to 7:00. And then Wednesday, July 17th, is the Police Department event at Flagship Park also, from 6:00 to 8:00. The Police Department will be grilling hot dogs, and members of the SWAT team and the crime van will be there, as well as Kona Ice. And then Wednesday, July 25th, Fishing Derby at Flagship Park, and that's from 8:00 to 10:00 a.m. in the morning. Wednesday, July 25th, is the Earlanger Swim Night at Silver Lake Recreation Center, and that's 6:30 to 9:00. And then Monday, July 29th, the Fire EMS event at Silver Lake Park from 6:00 to 8:00. The Earlanger firefighters and emergency medical technicians with their fire and ambulance trucks will be at this event, and Kona Ice also. And Ms. Hopkins is in the house.
Rebecca, do you have anything this evening? Any questions for the committee or Ms. Hopkins? You have heard the reports of standing committees. I understand the motion to be adopted as presented, motion by Mr. Brown, second by Ms. Kyle. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Are there any reports from any representatives of our, of the groups that we participate in?
I will make a couple of statements about the mayor's group. I finally got a chance to go back to a meeting. It didn't conflict with my bar association obligations, which got ramped up pretty substantially midnight, Sunday night. But it was a very good discussion, and most of the discussion, the presentation was about the progress the city of Covington is making, and how they're going to try to invest in their infrastructure and in their future. And I have to congratulate the folks at Covington for what they're trying to do down there, because they're the biggest city in the county, and we all kind of revolve around them, so we congratulate them on what they're doing. And that's all that I had. Is there any, no other reports? And we'll go to the, to the reports of city. And we'll go to the reports of city operations. Our engineer, Mr. Vioxx, 45-year Vioxx.
Thank you, sir. Three things. The McGalpin Intersection Project that we've been talking about for about six weeks, we took bids in May, mentioned it's the last council meeting. The committee of myself, the mayor, and Mr. Han made a recommendation to Frankfurt. Nudging, we finally got them to tell us their position on our low bidder. Our low bidder is deficient on the goal for disadvantaged business enterprise, DBE, it's called. And they've made a recommendation back to us. We notified the recommendation to the low bidder, that we were not going to go with the low bidder, we're gonna go to the second bidder who was qualified or did meet the goals. They have appealed that decision, and under the specifications, they are, they have the ability to come before the mayor for a public hearing, for a hearing, not particularly a public hearing, hearing on that appeal. The mayor has set that hearing to be Monday at 3:00 with the current low bidder, and listen to their appeal to the decision that we would go to the second bidder. So hopefully sometime this month, we'll call a special meeting and be in a position to award that project so we can move forward with it. We were hoping to have it well under construction before school started, but that's obviously not gonna happen, but we are moving forward. You can see that the barrels are gone off of Dixie Highway. I hope you think that that looks pretty nice. David Han has delivered the contracts from both Elsmere and Earlanger to Duke for the installation of the streetlights, and obviously that'll make a big difference up there, too, because it'll pull your eye away from the spaghetti bowl of wires and poles. But everyone seems to be happy with it. Unfortunately, we had two toad stragglers, and a lot of toads got strangled Sunday night and Monday, and we had some washout of some of the mulch there, but we'll attend to that. But all the businesses up there seem to be appreciative of the project, and I hope you think it does look pretty good. The last is the Gateway Project. You've seen the trees got installed last week or 10 days. They're actually working on the wall in front of the city building out here. The Public Works Department will be either contracting or starting to do manicuring of the lawn, and that will include the area between the sidewalk and the curb, on the sidewalk side and behind the curb on the opposite side, back to and beyond the limits of the trees that were planted. It'll take a while for that mowing and massaging of that to really take an impact, but the continuous mowing of it and the planting of the trees certainly is a great enhancement there. And since you incorporated monies in this year's budget for more work, I will let you know that it's gonna include some major changes to this intersection up here, to the bus stop, to some stamped concrete between the curb and the sidewalk, so that some of that grass strip won't even stand out like it does on Dixie Highway. And some of the plantings, so that we will start to see the front door of the city of the Gateway start to really look a lot sharper than it has been for a long time. That's all I have.
Any questions of Mr. Vioxx? Move on to our city attorney, Mr. Wickman.
Yes, sir. The only item I have tonight, other than the ordinances, is the second ordinance involving the revision of the termination authority of the mayor for employment of non-elected officials. We've, the last council meeting, y'all directed me to substitute the city council as a hearing agency instead of a attorney designated by me. And I've done that literally, but that brings up a question of what exactly this public hearing by the city council should involve and how it should be conducted, which is not addressed in the ordinance tonight. So I would like to ask that the first pass, first reading of that ordinance be postponed, that it be referred back to the committee, for the committee meeting, so we can discuss the parameters of that public hearing.
The, I anticipate the meeting on the 16th, which has already been scheduled, taking a while. Let's put this to the week after that, which would be the 23rd.
Okay.
Is that all right with y'all? 23rd.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Any questions of Mr. Wickman? You've heard the reports of city operations. I understand the motion to be adopted as presented. Motion, Mr. Dunhoff, second by Mr. Burke. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Correspondents, Ms. Hoffman.
The City of Earlanger received a thank you card from Jill Bailey thanking the city for their condolences in the loss of her mother. The City of Earlanger received a letter from Ben Huff with the Boone County Sheriff's Office thanking the city for their cooperation in the missing person investigation, when Terry Allen and his cadaver dogs assisted multiple times during the investigation. Chief Fields received a letter from Ryan Williams and Sarah Backshider thanking the Police Department for their assistance in protecting their daughter when an unauthorized person tried to gain access to her while at school. And Missy Andrews received an email from Pat Han thanking the city for thanking of her while recuperating from an injury.
Anybody else have any correspondence? You all, some of you, not all of you, some of you will remember Jill Bailey, who's the city manager, the city administrative officer at Taylor Mill, her mother, Larian Kane, served with us here on city council. And her father, Melvin, was always at events, very fine people, and Ms. Kane lost her life to cancer, and we, as a city, acknowledged that and sent some things over. And she served this city well, and we're sorry to see this happen to her, and we wish Jill and her family the best. Okay, now's the time we reserve in our agenda for citizens and public comments. Does anybody sign up this evening? Nobody wants to talk to us, that's a good news. Do we have any bids this evening?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Vioxx.
Here on your desk, bids for two projects. The first one is the Summer 2013 Concrete Street Repairs, and it's listed as the Bristol Court, Fernwood Court area. If you go to the breakdown sheet, we had bidders, JPS Construction at $111,694, TMS Construction at $116,075, Paul Michaels &amp; Sons Incorporated at $118,380, M&amp;W Excavating $124,294, and last, Walter Martin Excavating Incorporated $220,205. We're well under the amount that we can award inside the limits of the prevailing wage scale, so we're recommending that we award the work to JPS, that it'll also include adding Misty Creek Drive, the balance of it, and Sagebrush Lane on that contract. I recommend award the project to JPS Construction, Inc.
Is there a motion to adopt that? Mr. Dunhoff, second by Ms. Pitts. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's awarded. Mr. Vioxx.
Second project is the Summer 2013 Milling and Resurfacing, specifically on Kenton Land Road, Fitzgerald Court, and it's in the area where we just finished sidewalks and we're doing the street, and Cave Run Drive, the section that goes from Dixie Highway back to Earlanger Lakes and the commercial area. Bidders for Paul Michaels &amp; Sons at $215,377.50, Lynn Regular Blacktop Incorporated $235,535.44, Eaton Asphalt Paving Company Incorporated $240,707, and Bluegrass Paving at $242,597. All of these are well within the budget. I'll recommend the work to Paul Michaels &amp; Sons Incorporated.
Is there a motion to accept that motion by Ms. Pitts, second by Ms. Kyle? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Any other bids, sir?
That's all I have, sir.
Ms. Hoffman, do you have any bids?
Yes, sir.
Any reports of work in progress? I have two brief items I wanted to tell you all about. First of all, congratulations to the Earlanger-Elsmere FOP for their successful motorcycle thing. On Saturday, I drove by my way to the post office, I'm sorry, on my way to the bank Saturday morning, and there were zillions of motorcycles at the FOP lodge, and they had their ride. I guess you got a little wet, didn't you, Mark?
Yes.
They got a little wet, but they raised money and they, for the police memorial, and it was a very well-attended and well-supported event, and I congratulate the FOP on all of their efforts. The second, the Northern Kentucky Area Planning Commission, as you know, has been contracted with the City of Earlanger to work on the Commonwealth Station Project, the zone, the possible rezoning of this area over here to incorporate form-based zones, the codes in our zoning. It is on schedule. I spoke with the gentleman at the Planning Commission when I was down there for the Northern Kentucky Area Planning Council last Thursday. It's right on schedule, and they hope to have, to begin the adoption process this fall. So that's news of coming events. They're making real good progress over there. That's the only reports I have. Anybody else have any reports? Anybody have any reports for, I think, the good welfare of the city, any new business? Seeing none, we'll move on to the legislation. Mr. Wickman, we're gonna have one first reading, correct?
Yes, sir.
All right.
It's an ordinance of the City of Earlanger in Kenton County, Kentucky, amending the text of the Earlanger Zoning Ordinance Number 1850, to add multi-family residential dwellings as a permitted use within the BP1 Zone, allowing automatic changeable copy signs for institutional uses within all zones, and reducing the residential distance for the application of the operation requirements for outdoor dining from 400 feet to 340 feet.
I'll ask the city clerk to note in the minutes the first reading of that ordinance. Is there any other legislation this evening, Mr. Wickman?
No, sir.
We are at the end of our agenda. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Kyle, second by Mr. Longshore. Any discussion? See you in two weeks. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we are adjourned. Thank you all.